I guess maybe not as far as an argument to the ends here of what we're trying to accomplish, but just out more out of curiosity. The, this whole debacle of a changed document having occurred, I just, I just don't see any of it. I don't see where it is, I don't see where, I don't see any substantial materials that say, oh my God, you're not going to believe it, but this was, this was changed. I don't see any of that.
We do see that on our end, and if, if.
But where has it been substantiated? And where has it been proven? And where is there someone that's siding with you to say, here it is?
John, everybody's siding with them.
Hold on, let me ask.
But no, 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 I'm sorry.
I'm trying that.
I understand that.
I'm trying legally.
No, everybody is siding with them, except for you.
No.
You're being argumentative over something. Look, we are all in agreeance that something is wrong here.
No, no.
I, look, hold on, I'm not done yet.
You're interrupting.
I have finished, or I, I fired Kevin Karpinski, or terminated his contract, and per his contract, if, if he looks wrong, I can fire him, or terminate him. I did nothing wrong. But I also know how upset these guys were, and I stand by our FOP. Because to sit here and say, well, you know, I don't really see anything, it's calling them a liar.
We all stand by the FOP. This is an FOP agreement.
Okay, then, 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 let's fix it.
It's an FOP agreement.
Right, and they're saying it's wrong, so let's fix it.
Let me finish. It's an FOP agreement that we're trying to honor, okay? And I told you before, this isn't an end to the means of what we're talking about tonight. But I'm saying, I'm being quite honest with you, Scott, I don't, I have never, since 2001, I haven't seen anything substantial that says, oh, by the way, you're not going to believe this, but this document was changed ahead of time. And I was only asking, is there not anything out there after two years substantial that the council would look at and go, wow, this, this really was an error?
I don't have enough copies to provide everyone tonight, but I have a copy of the email traffic, one of the, one of them I just read, that shows the interaction between our attorney and Kevin Karpinski, and the change that was made after we signed, or not after we signed, after we ratified the document, the change was made, and it's timestamped on his own email. Kevin Karpinski changed the language, which you all know as paragraph, I believe it's 4.2 or 4.1, what it's, Appendix C. We did not agree to that. The first time we ever saw that was at 3:00 PM on July the 1st, when I got my first copy of the, of the final contract. And so that, on its face, is the only thing I can offer to you to show you that it was changed.
Yeah, and I guess, why didn't, why didn't that come to the council in November of 2021?
We've been trying through the, through the grievance process. We filed a grievance immediately upon, upon finding this out, and it's, that grievance is still pending. So the, the matter is, is, it's gone through the process.
So when was the first, the first FOP agreement, CBA?
The very first one?
The very first one, 2010?
I believe it was 2006, I believe was the very first one.
Well, it was when it was approved, but then it had, I mean, that's when it was voted in, right?
I believe 2006 is when it, it was when it passed referendum, and 2009, I believe, was the very first contract.
Okay. So what, what did the first one say?
There, there, this wasn't included in the first one.
None of this?
This, the first one says that we're bound by the 2001 Personnel Manual, and any changes thereafter have to be agreed, it's, it's, it's in the Preservation Benefits.
So there was nothing in either one of the prior contracts that were agreed on that had anything about this in there?
Well, but I don't know when the disability, the disability fund was added later.
Okay, all right.
So, again.
That's fine.
That language was changed because of the lawsuits filed by Mike Bowers and Sam Workman.
So what?
That triggered that change.
And the reason the lawsuit was filed was because the FOP does not represent retirees. Our, so we could not use the grievance process for two retirees who are arguing the same, the same argument as the current grievance stands.
Mr. Edina, you said the language was changed. Who changed it?
Kevin Karpinski, the same thing that's, like, so what I'm saying is, is that when they were in the, this just happened to be a perfect storm. Mike, if you look at a timeline of events, and we've studied this, I know Councilman Baker has, Councilman Wynn has, the timeline of events shows Mike and Sam Workman trying to retire accidental disability. Then all of a sudden, offset is happening. They file a lawsuit. Literally, as soon as they filed the lawsuit, we were right in the collective bargaining with them in 2021. So this, so as we're moving forward, okay, the, the situation happened with, with what Mr. Hamilton is saying. So it literally triggered this because of these lawsuits. It was almost like, and I don't want to make assumptions, but it was like a CYA situation.
So who would, who would have instructed Mr. Karpinski to change this language?
I think actually Mr. Karpinski did, because he was our attorney for Legit, and then it would have been our HR director, Jackie Currie.
So that's the one that?
So this debate has gone on for how long?
Years.
Since we discovered this, and it was either, it was either September or October, but it was 2021, just a, just a few months after.
We just keep spinning wheels, spinning wheels.
We are in a holding pattern until the grievance is resolved, we can't even address it.
Whether you believe that the language was put there by Kevin Karpinski, or it wasn't, or however it got there, I think the question is, ask yourself, is this language good for the deputies and the men and women at the Wycomico County Sheriff's Office?
So two of the parties.
That's what you should be asking yourself.
Two of the parties are coming here with a request to change the language to be that the offset doesn't happen. Council agreed in the settlement that the offset didn't happen. So we are going with that information, that there are two of the three parties who would like the offset to be taken out of the document. We are coming to council to try to have the three, so if we need to amend the CBA to reflect this change, as well as amend the pension, and the employee manual, and the code, then those, that is what we need to do to make all, so we've got two of the three parties agreeing to these changes, and we're coming to council and asking for them.
Let me, let me say something, and this, this may not affect the meaning, but you, when the council agreed to the settlement, that did not mean they were agreeing that the language was right or wasn't wrong, they agreed to settle the case.
And at the time, I specifically stated to council that unless the pension, then...
No, I, I understand that, that's not anything to do with what I'm saying. I'm saying you are phrasing it as if the council had agreed, oh my gosh, the language was wrong.
No, what I'm...
They didn't agree, they agreed to pay the money and settle the case, that's all they agreed to.
And what I'm saying is, and what I'm saying is, is that in that settlement agreement conversation, we mentioned, I know I mentioned, that unless we came back and amended the pension, and...
Yes, it couldn't be paid with pension, I understand that. That's not the same, that...
That is what I said. That is what I'm saying right now.
Well, I think you're actually saying that they agreed the wording was wrong.
No, what I, no, what I'm saying is, is we came to council...
That's, that's okay, you made your point.
So you're, you're asking us, as the third party, if we would be willing to agree to renegotiate and open up the contract?
This section of the contract.
Sure, sure, that's what they're asking. Mrs. Hurley, you have a comment, question?
Um, I actually have a couple of them, actually. Mr. Hamilton, you mentioned that there's a ongoing grievance with the 2021 collective bargaining agreement?
Yes.
Okay, so that's separate from the Attorney, um, Commission, Attorney Grievance Commission? Is that a whole separate agreement?
I think you referred to Kevin Karpinski's situation, like, two separate things.
Yes, I, I made it known to the, to the Bar Association, or to the Grievance Commission, that I was, that I wasn't happy with the way that our contract worked, and the fact that it was our belief, based on everything that we provided, that Mr. Karpinski knowingly changed the wording after we provided him with a summary document, and he changed what we wanted, after we ratified it.
When you say there's an ongoing grievance, I mean...
There is a pending grievance with a current employee at the sheriff's office that is still pending. And that grievance was first filed in 2021, when we discovered this issue. And it was ironic that when that employee filed for his disability, that he was provided a copy of Appendix C, Paragraph 4, highlighted by the staff at the time, and that was the first time we had been made aware of it. Because again, we never saw it during our approval of, of the contract.
Can I follow up on that? So this grievance, this grievance is an internal grievance within, within the county?
Yes.
Okay.
That's, well, I'm trying to verify, yeah.
Yes, it is a, we, we filed the grievance process, it is a current grievance.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Because I'm not understanding all this. When I agreed to settle, I didn't agree that I agreed with the double dipping. I didn't agree for that. I didn't agree for that. I agreed for raises, don't get me wrong, I agreed for raises for, and then come up on...
Hold on, please, hold on, we have a council brief.
And, and I, and I didn't understand, because it, it was something, before we came, the new council came, and we wanted to settle, and I thought we would be done with that. And I also think, believe, when, when you have an important document as your contract, to me, it's no excuse that you didn't know what was in the contract. It was 2021, this is 2023, and before you ratified or assigned this document, you, you should have made it up there on that podium, wherever, the public comment, some kind of way, you should have got, um, it known that this is what, that this is what you didn't agree to. Now here it is, 2023, and I think you say you're starting negotiations in July. I do think that we should make everything mesh, but just going back and forth is not helping people. And I remember Pam was talking about the IRS, we need to follow the law. One of the rules are, we need to follow them, so we can move on. Because what's going to happen, there might be another word in the collective bargaining document, that some other person might not like and want to sue, sue the county. So I don't want this to be an open field day in suing, suing the county. Because I think that, um, if I'd known this argument was going to happen, I might not have agreed with, with, um, appealing.
Can I, can I answer that question?
Sure.
Um, yes, I agree that we should follow the law, absolutely. And did we make it known to, to the powers that be that there was an issue? Yes, we did, via the grievance, which follows the law. We followed the grievance policy and procedure, a grievance was filed by the grievance board, and the steps were followed per the policy. And that process is still pending. So we haven't been able to close, because it hasn't, uh, the final, we haven't gone to arbitration at this point.
Well, the way I would have done it was, if something was brought to the county, before I would file a grievance, I would have brought it to the attention of the county council and the Human Resource Department.
I can't come straight to the county council, I have to follow the grievance process. So the grievance process specifically states that the grievant will meet with a grievance committee to determine whether or not they have a valid grievance. And in this case, it was determined that this person did have a valid grievance. The grievance was then provided to the, um, the Division Commander of the Sheriff's Office, and if that person cannot handle the grievance, it goes to the sheriff. If the sheriff can't handle it, it goes to Human Resources. And that process has been followed. No party has been able to agree on a solution, and now it is going to the final step, which is an arbitrator. And then once the arbitrator makes the decision, it's binding upon both parties. Our arbitration date is pending, um, and we will see what happens.
So do we need to wait until we act, until we get an, a solution, a resolution from the arbitrator?
Honestly, what I'm hoping for is that we could open up negotiations and fix this ourselves. And if, if that's an option, then we'd like to explore that option.
With that being said, whether we clear this language up or not, which I hope we do, we're going to have to open up the contract, correct me if I'm wrong, Julie, if we're going to entertain raises for the sheriff's office, which, which you've, you've alluded to that that's coming, we can't give those raises unless the contracts open up. Is that right or wrong?
Well, I didn't realize that that was the situation, but yes, apparently so. So I, um, I feel like, you know, it's frustrating to me, because I feel like, and this is not anybody in this room's fault, I feel like we follow contracts when it's, when it's, like, convenient for us. So I just, I, I, it's very frustrating to me, because in coming in this role, the amount of things that we have put on the back burner, not followed, while we're following this, while we have the IRS, we've got this, I know the sheriff is coming for these raises, we are looking at, you know, our budget at this point in time, so in answer to your question, yes. My question is, do we bring, do you want everything at once, with everything aligned, including, you know, the raises and everything else? Or do you want it piecemealed? I kind of assumed that it would be piecemealed, so that way it was a little bit more tangible, but that's up, I, I'll do whatever you all want.
I'm one of seven.
Understood.
My opinion, if we're going to get into this, let's get into it. Let's get the, the CBA fixed, or the contract, let's get the pension plan document fixed, and soon to be, let's get the Personnel Manual fixed, and let's get it all behind us. This has gone on long enough.
It's going to really help with morale, I think, with our sheriff's deputies too, because...
Because we got to keep in mind...
This has been going on forever.
This is, we got another year on this contract, and other deputies could get injured, God forbid, I hope not. And they're going to fall into this, you know, and I've given examples before to people, and I want people to understand just how important this is. You have a deputy that gets seriously injured in the line of duty, a debilitating injury, and he gets a workman's comp check for his injury. I interpret that as a check of, I'm sorry you lost your leg, there's nothing we can do to replace it, this is a payment, uh, from the county thanking you for your service, and you're going to get your pension too, which you're entitled to, which you've been working for, just like everybody else.
And paid into.
And paid into. I don't interpret them as the same thing. You know, I, I've seen it, you know?
Right.
All over the country, really bad injuries, and sometimes deputies are, are law enforcement lose their lives.
Well, in today's time, I mean, we need all the deputies we can get, so if we can give them the best of the best, I absolutely think we need to try and do that.
These guys are watching what we're doing.
Hey Shane, if I, and, and whatever you decide, I'm not trying to, to influence that, but there's a difference between the accidental disability and the pension. They're going to get the pension if they're actually retired, even if they're getting workers' comp. That's not a, that's not a payback.
No, what I'm saying, what's in question, if someone gets a worker, workers' compensation settlement check.
Right, where they have to pay it back.
And then they get medically retired, and they get a disability pension.
Right, I understand that, you're talking about the disability pension.
Yes.
Right, okay.
Yes.
That's, that's all I was trying to get straight.
Yeah.
Because the, the regular pension they would still get if they retire.
Yes.
Correct.
Right, okay.
And I, I just, and I respect everyone's opinion, and everybody's got opinions. I see them as two totally different things, you know, and I don't think one should be taken away from you, uh, just because you've got, it's an extra 16%.
Right.
You know? And you're going to be...
As they're accounted, they pay for that we don't.
That's tax free.
And, and keep in mind that the deputies pay into, they pay for that 16%.
Right, they bargain for it.
They bargain for it. And it's just, I, I just feel like if we got to get into it, let's get into it and get it cleaned up.
So...
Can I, can I respond to that?
Sure.
Uh, if, if I could, I don't sit here as an expert witness, I'm not going to give you, you know, an, an expert statement, however, in, in layman's terms, the way that we all, I believe, as CBA members, and the FOP believe what a workman's compensation settlement is, is not double dipping, if you will, it's, it's to get your case out of the system. If you have a case with workman's compensation in the state of Maryland, that case is opened, and you are entitled to benefits through that program, through the state program. If you decide that you don't want those services anymore, then you can settle, just as any other court case can be settled. And the compensation settlement is when the parties agree to, um, maybe a percentage, or whatever your debilitation is, or whatever your, your disability is. And it's when you both agree, and that gets you out of the system. It's not because they are giving you something instead of a pension, it's to get you gone.
Right.
And once you receive that, I received a workman's compensation settlement when I was working at the sheriff's office, and I still retired. I didn't have to pay a dime of that money back, because I retired normally. And if you follow the 2001 plan, or the 2010 plan, they all kind of run together now, I don't know which one it is, but in there, at some point, it said that you only paid it back if you got a workman's compensation settlement after the Medical Advisory Review Board determined that you were disabled. And that's what we're trying to, to clarify. When the language was changed, it doesn't matter who changed it, like you said, Mr. Cannon, it doesn't matter who changed it. The fact of the matter is, it was changed, and we didn't agree to it because of, the previous contracts didn't say that. We would never give up that benefit, it's foolish, it's a great thing. And yes, some agencies don't have that benefit, but we do, and we don't want to lose it. Because that is a, is a small token of a contribution for whatever you've gone through, whether it's you lost your hand because your dog bit you, or because I busted my, my ligaments and my thumb wrestling with a guy who was beating his wife in a parking lot. It doesn't matter, but it's a small token of what you, what you sacrificed to help you along with, with what you lost. Lost wages, lost overtime, whatever. So that's, that's where we're at, and that's what we want to try to accomplish. And if, if we can open the door, and Mr. Cannon, I know that, that you're, you're, your position, I, I respect your position, and I can only offer you what I have, and it shows our side of the conversation, which you haven't been privy to. And I would hope that I could show you these documents, I will provide them all, all to you, and I would also like for you to give me the opportunity to invite counsel, my counsel, back, who will tell you the same thing. That is, that we never agreed to what's in Appendix C.
Yeah, again, that was more of a personal curiosity on my part, and trying to believe that. Mr. Wilbur, um, what is the length of time for the process to begin a renegotiation, knowing that we also have a, a budget that's supposed to be before this council on April 15th?
Right, well...
Or closed date of 15th?
As, as it's been said here tonight, it, the negotiation process is, it's in the county code, you know, that's what we follow. And whether we can expedite that to move things quickly, so we could just move this whole thing as quickly as possible, I need to talk with the FOP attorneys, see how, you know, what their view is of expediting a reopening of, we'll say, a part of the CBA. It sounds like tonight, we're talking about two things. We're talking about Item 4 and Appendix C, and we're talking about wage increases. That's what I'm hearing.
Right, and so my question would be also, you know, you talk about wage increases, where are we, where, how are we going to be dealing with compression? How are we going to be dealing with that in the sheriff's office?
We have all that taken care of, so you'll see it in, you'll see it in the spreadsheet.
Okay. Um, because collective bargaining always seems to take eight months, six months. What do we, what do we talk about now?
Yeah, our, our impasse date typically is, is in April. Uh, so if we started negotiations now, I believe that it, I don't know if it's in the charter that it's April.
I think it is.
Yeah, all the, all the timelines are in the...
Yeah, the charter stipulates a timeline, or the code stipulates a timeline, so even if we started today, the charter is still going to dictate the timeline. Um, so again, I think that we're back to, do we agree to work together to make these changes? And I, I can't put my finger on it at the moment, but I know within this 42-page document of our CBA, it does say that if things need to be renegotiated, I think we can do it. So I believe it's permitted by the contract, but I, I need to put my finger on it.
We're not, we're not restricted by the charter, Mr. Uh, Mr. Wilbur, on how we, how we begin negotiations?
I mean, we should follow the county charter and code. The point I'm making is, can we expedite that process to deal with these two issues?
That's a question for you.
Yeah, that's something, I want to talk to the FOP attorneys, see if they're agreeable.
Okay.
But there are three parties, right? We're a party, we have to agree, the executive's office has to agree, the FOP has to agree.
The employer, I believe, the sheriff, I think, would have to agree as well, he's...
And the sheriff.
Right, the way it generally works is, uh, yeah, the sheriff's a party, the executive's a party, FOP is a party, and the negotiation occurs at that level, and then the way it has occurred in the past is, the council is periodically informed of negotiations.
We would not have to give a blessing to reopen it.
Ultimately, ultimately, the council has to approve the contract.
Right, but, but to reopen it, you don't need anything from us, like, you got to just do it.
No, I don't believe we need anything from you, no.
Captain?
How's everybody? Captain Rich Weersby, Wycomico County Sheriff's Office. Hopefully I don't speak out of turn for the sheriff, since he's unavailable right now, but a couple of things I think we need to point out, and I think we all agree that the Wycomico County Sheriff's Office is in dire need for pay adjustment. I understand that document does agree, but I think we would all agree that this document isn't in place to harm our process of keeping deputies and attracting new deputies. Just for example, the Wycomico County Sheriff's Office recently has become lower paid than the Ocean Pines Police Department for starting salary.
You speak more into your mic.
I don't, am I talking loud enough, or is it...
I don't know, can't hear you.
Go ahead.
Recently, the Wycomico County Sheriff's Office has just been passed by the Ocean Pines Police Department. Their starting salary is more than ours. Our county is bigger than their jurisdiction, our population is larger. We'd all think, would agree, that this document is not to hinder our ability to improve the working relationship between our deputies, the council, and the people that we serve. Now granted, I'm not a lawyer by any stretch of the imagination, I have just a political science degree, but in section, page three of the most current document, um, that we're in now for the collective bargaining agreement, page three, Section 6, Section 3, wages and premiums will be paid in accordance with the Wycomico County Personnel Manual as amended from time to time as funded by the county budget. Now, we do know there's a subsection in this document that talks specifically about the raises by steps, et cetera, but to me, this also, to me, would reference the time that we're in this dire need to adjust this sooner than later, without reopening a process will take us six to eight months, and by that time, I guarantee you, I will lose, lose at least three to six more deputies to the Maryland State Police, or even Carroll County, that are paying, I think their starting salary is roughly $60,000. I may be mistaken on that, but it's close to that number. That I would stress, that maybe we could look at that section of this document to see is that, and, and I, I also understand, I may be wrong, that the grievance process is only if one party decides to file that grievance. If we go forward and it's not challenged, then the documents can still go forward, i.e. pay scale adjustment. If the FOP does not grieve that process, there's no argument, it can still go forward. There's no violation, because hence they didn't file grievance in a certain amount of time. So that would be that concern. Now, reference, this is the collective bargaining agreement we're recording, Section 6, Page 3, subsection, it's Article 6, sorry, Article 6, Section C. And we also do know there is Appendix that specifies particular pay scale, but this may be a way for us to look at that, doesn't violate the document. And then there's one other section, if you look at Article, I believe it's 14, it's Preservation of Benefits, it talks about there about...
Did you try?
Sorry. Preservation of Benefits also talks about personnel managers and stuff, as long as both parties agree. So I just think, from the sheriff's office point of view, if we open a collective bargaining agreement again, I don't think we will accomplish the goal that any of us want to accomplish, which is to get this going as fast. Now, reference the one topic we're here. Now, our goal with the FOP here is that we want to see this go forward as fast as quickly, we're for the pension, but selfishly, for the pay cycle, what I need to maintain deputies on the street for safety, I think that in that section may address that for us, without opening the whole can of words to collective bargaining agreement. Hope I...
That's sensitive.
Mr. Cannon?
For that very reason.
I got to thank the captain, yes, it is Article 6, Wages and Premiums, Paragraph C, as, as he read, the wages may be amended from time to time, and paid in accordance with the Personnel Manual. I would agree too, that the pension plan is another benefit that retains employees, or attracts employees. So having these documents entertained by council and possibly approved would also attract and retain employees at the sheriff's office, and not to mention the rest of the county as well.
Do we want to get Mr. Wilbur to move forward with this? Right, okay. Mr. Wilbur, you...
For what?
Reopening.
With reopening it and adjusting it.
Yeah. We'll look at these sections.
Are you, Mr. Cannon, just for my clarification, are you saying that you're willing to allow us to have a conversation to, to, to clarify, or to fix, or to amend our, our CBA?
Correct.
Thank you.
Yeah, just move, let's get it. For, for clarity, the process is CBA first, then?
us to have a conversation to clarify, or to fix, or to amend our CBA?
Correct.
Thank you.
For clarity, the process is CBA first, then?
Well, we're going to have to do it, we're going to have to move very quickly with every aspect of it.
So if I, CBA pension for this specific piece would need to be adopted prior to us adopting a budget. Otherwise, I need to have the payments in the budget. So we have to take these all kind of in the next two and a half months. Otherwise, there are certain dollar amounts that have to be in the budget to be able to continue the settlement agreement. So the CBA pension code and pay scale, all are going to have to be considered between now and the budget, the close of the budget process.
I thought Mr. Hamilton said that they couldn't be ready by July 1st.
So I think those little pieces, I think we, if, I believe, and maybe I'm wrong, I believe the FOP, the only pieces, I believe we're willing, we're talking about opening is pay and this language in the section four, whatever. So I think, based on them sitting here at the table, they would agree to let that piece be opened and be expedited as long as we all can get to the same language.
I, to clarify my comment, that, again, the charter stipulates the timeline. There's no way that we could have, we could have an impasse of April, or whatever it is. That's probably next week. We couldn't renegotiate the entire contract by next week. It's just, it's not.
I mean, if you can't do it, then.
But, no, the entire contract.
If we give it raises, we would be in violation of the CBA.
No, sir. As, as.
Okay, all right. You're telling me no. Okay. All right.
We're good.
I think what it says is that they have to present it, and the council has to act on it by sometime in May, I believe it is. It might be May the 1st, or something like, but whatever it is, there's a deadline in there. But at this point, you're not following it anyway.
No, I was simply responding to Ms. Hurley, who said we wouldn't have time to renegotiate the contract. And I would agree with that. We don't have time. But to address issues that we're, that we want to address, I think we can work very expeditiously. And I will make sure my counsel was made aware of that as well, to make sure that their calendar reflects.
It sounds like you're talking about just doing an amendment versus opening it up or renegotiating.
I don't think, I don't think we have time to renegotiate the entire contract and get it through the ratification process by an impasse, or by May deadline, which would, and again, the charter, the code stipulates that timeline.
I think we're, I think we're both talking about amendments to affect these two sections, pay and pension. Disability pension.
Sounds great.
We talked about doing everything as a bundle, the code, the pension, personnel manual, all.
Correct. Amendments, yeah. Amendments associated with those two pieces.
We'll have everything aligned, those four pieces in front of you that all align for those amendments.
Since we have Smith and Downey here, can I ask a couple of questions about the actual pension document?
Sure.
Section 7.1 indicates any amendments may be made retroactively. What about negative amendments? I mean, can they be made retroactively as well? Anything that would be, you know, impacting employees or retirees negatively?
Well, it depends. I mean, if you have a specific example, I could answer that specific example. But you couldn't reduce someone's pension benefit retroactively. So you couldn't take something away that's already been earned. You couldn't change their vesting requirements retroactively.
That's exactly what I was thinking. You know, right now, it's 5.65%. Could you increase it without the employees', I guess, feedback?
Increase, I'm sorry, increase the vesting, increase the?
I'm sorry, the contribution amount.
Oh, increase the contribution amount? That's, that's another, there's a recent decision with the Fourth Circuit Court of Appeals that indicated that certain benefits may be able to be prospectively changed. I've always had the opinion that a pension benefit cannot be prospectively changed for a government employee, because it was part of a contract. But that, that particular case may have weakened that position a little bit. So there is a question of whether you can increase their contribution rate. I believe you can, especially if you're providing something in addition to go along with that particular increase. For example, if there's some other increase in their benefit as a result of that increased rate of contribution. I'd have to look at exactly what you're talking about to give a specific answer, answer on that.
Okay. The other question I have is section 11.8. It referenced the employees, but it doesn't mention any retirees in that section. For example, it says, any employee, or, yeah, any employer, by appropriate action and notice to the plan sponsor, the administrator, and the trustee, may withdraw from the plan and trust anytime, or may terminate the plan and trust with respects to its employees at any time. But it doesn't mention the retirees. And farther down in that same section, it says, a withdrawing employer may arrange for the continuation of this plan and trust in separate forms for its own employees. What about the retirees? Is my question?
Right. So if you were to terminate the plan, and you had retirees, you'd have to provide an annuity that kept their benefits going that they'd already earned and started receiving. You couldn't terminate their payments, because they've already earned that benefit. So you couldn't terminate the plan and end their benefit. No. This particular plan is, I think many of you know, is a combination of two plans, one for the Board of Education employees, one for the county employees. And so they were combined a long time ago. That's why sometimes you'll see duplicative provisions. One will be for the county, one will be for the, for the Board of Education employees. So this provision allows one of the two of you to withdraw from this plan, and separate and have its own plan, instead of having combined plan. But there are restrictions on what you do. One is you have to preserve benefits for people, for the benefits that have been earned. And if you terminate the plan, you have to provide an ongoing payment for those benefits already earned. Correct?
That answers it. Thank you.
Okay.
Do I have any other questions? All right.
And just to clarify, just one more thing. Just to clarify, the original submission of the plan was changing the normal retirement age, you know, from age 55, or 25 years of service to age 55 and 25 years of service, and you guys are no longer making that change? Is that correct?
Correct. Yes. It's staying as or.
Or.
That was the type, though. I apologize.
The importance of one word.
I told you, taking the fall for that one.
Yep. Thank you.
Thanks, Scott.
Thanks, Scott.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good seeing you.
The next item on the agenda, the American Rescue Plan, has been postponed, thanks to Steve Miller. We have the proposed water and sewer plan amendment for the pond at Nutter's Crossing.
Good morning. No, good evening. It's not as exciting. I'm here today. We're going to be requesting the approval for the water and sewer amendment for the pond at Nutter's Crossing. I do want to specify that in one of the documents, I did have the wrong address. It's the parcels. I would not go off of the address. It was in the memo to the executive. It is not 4020 Snow Hill. It is the pond at Nutter's Crossing parcels. So the original design had showed us a community septic. However, during development, the developer determined that it just wasn't feasible cost-wise. So it was listed as a tier 2A designation in the county's comprehensive plan, then adopted it as that. Since the developer hasn't completed it, the planning committee has reviewed and approved the new subdivision plan for onsite septic and wells. The health department has approved this with conditional being final, subject to this water and sewer amendment. And MDP has also agreed to the proposal. And the plat is now ready to be signed and recorded. We are waiting for forest conservation approval as well.
Is this the one with 16 parcels?
Don't quote me on that one. I believe it's 16, yes.
Yeah. Any questions? Josh?
I don't want to go take much time into this, but the, the quick pieces of it, obviously, the, so to be clear, this is, they're going to try to move to septic systems.
Yes.
And we are, of course, as a county, trying not to do septic systems.
Touche. Correct, but in the condition it is now, it's basically unusable.
Because we can't connect, because, why is it unusable? We cannot, it is not feasible for them to make an investment or profit if they can't connect to Fruitland or Salisbury?
Basically.
They'd have to be contingent, not contingent, what's the word? Contiguous, thank you. It has to be contiguous. It's impossible.
You can set up an urban service agreement, but I don't think Fruitland can serve something that far away.
And he was going to put in a private system a few years ago, and the county turned him down on that. Remember, Sean? A long, long, long time ago?
Well, I don't think the county turned him down. In the middle of negotiations, we hit the recession of 2008, and it got dropped completely. Yeah.
That's, yeah, that's what happened.
The other obvious situation here is that if you were standing on this property, and you look straight across the road, you can see the epicenter of the tetrachloreethylene situation. Are they going to get their water from well, or are they going to get it from public?
As far as I know, it would be well.
So we're going to poison our residents?
It's going to be W6 S6.
I mean, I guess the next question is, are we going, what's the process there for them to test that? Because, I mean, it almost looks like they just waited, hey, we'll just wait 10 years, make sure nobody knows the 12 years that this has happened. But this is a, this was obviously a really big situation, where a lot of folks were poisoned. And then we had to put the infrastructure in there to connect them. So I guess, from multiple standpoints, it seems to be a little bit challenging, in the sense that we're going in an opposite direction of where the county wants to go, with putting more septic and more sewage into our land. And then we are, then, you know, allowing a situation where residents could potentially be, you know, could face some real issues. I would love to see this happen. We need more development, more homes now, but obviously, we need them to be connected to water and public water and sewer, not on well and septic, especially if they're in an area where they literally would be, you know, poisoned.
Again, I think that's why we're leaning on the health department as well, in their approval. And it is.
The current, the way that their state has looked at it is basically looking at our tier mapping, which, you know, we determine our tier mappings. And of course, we originally said that this would be tier two planned for development, not tier three, you know, connected to, you know, that could be connected to septic. So, yeah.
They just got to get it purged and get the well approval first. I mean.
Yeah, so they got to test the water. Hopefully, there's nothing wrong with the water there.
Obviously, they wouldn't be, yeah.
Yeah, because it's near where Fruitland is, where that water is all.
Yeah. I don't think they are required to.
Well, if you could just make sure that you reference it to the health department, bring it to their attention, or we could do it, Mrs. Hurley.
Sure.
I'm not trying to upset anything. Honestly, I wouldn't want to upset anything, but it's maybe a valid point. I don't think the, I don't think the developer would want to get into this, if he felt that might be, he might be running headlong into that problem. But as far as zoning is concerned, and asking us for the change, and I don't have any problem with changing it. You say the county doesn't want to go that direction, but I don't know. We represent the county, and I'm quite all right with well and septic for right now.
I mean, we, as we've said, we are trying to lower our nutrient loading. We are trying to move away from, you know, we are currently in the process of review. We reviewed the new water and sewer amendment, so that we can get away from this exact problem. Because this will be a problem, these septic systems will fail. It's just a matter of time. So.
Hold on to that thought. Yeah, for, yeah.
Yeah. So I'd rather that not happen, and I'd rather the county not spend more money, more of our resources.
Unfortunately, yes, we're not to that point yet. And I wish we were, but we're not there. And we can't just hold on, in my opinion.
But the developer or others could put money into, I'm sorry if it doesn't make financial sense immediately, but this is where we have to move. We need to all be moving in this direction, and not in a situation where, you know, where this is going to be a future problem, we're just kicking the can down the road.
They're doing their best to slow it up, Josh. I had a fellow call me yesterday that said it's taken him a year and a half to try to get a perk. And they keep telling him it's, they got to wait for the wet season. So he says, so they're slowing development up as best they can.
I would love to see this on public water and sewer. That's where it should be. And especially if there's a chance that someone's going to be very sick from the well water. There's no way in the world that they should be drinking the well water, anyone who lives there.
I don't know. You're making that assumption. Do you know Nutter's Crossing as a whole has excellent water? Excellent water. I used to live there.
This is where this is at, Nutter's Crossing, Josh.
Yeah, but the, the water moves in and out. I mean, you could test it. I mean, the fact is, they.
Depends on the channel, sure.
Yeah. I mean, I, I know people, I say this, this might be a slight bit personal, in the sense that I know a woman who died from, immediately got cancer, and found out within, within six weeks she was dead. Her husband then has a brain tumor. They lived right at this area, right across the street. I mean, well, stone's throw. So.
We want the health department to do their due diligence. I agree with you there. As far as zoning and things like that, where are we? Establishing this, allowing for this 16 units. Is everyone okay with this? Agreed?
Yeah, I don't think, they shouldn't be not allowed to do this.
Well, I think, personally, I think that what Josh was stating, that the developer should make the people who he is selling these units to aware of the location. And that should be a stipulation for him. I don't have a problem with building units, but in that situation that Josh mentioned, the people should have the right to know where they, and that, is it Mr. Rourke that's doing this?
Mm-hmm.
So I think that they need to know that, were they a close by.
Well, I think that would be true, Councilwoman Shields, if the case were that the properties were suspect. If the health department goes and tests the soils, tests the waters, and said, this is, these wells are safe.
It's good to know.
Yeah, there's no need, there's no need for that type of disclaimer, or whatever he may have.
And we, I can have that conversation.
And that's, I think that's going to be the normal process the health department's going to be, going to take anyway.
Yes.
They test for everything.
I just want to make sure that we get that full clarity from them, because I don't want a basic test of, oh, yes, there's, there's, it's a right amount of nitrates, but that's all we're looking at. I mean, we have a whole suite of other issues that are, that we know, and not by the fault of anyone that's here or alive. It likely happened 60 or 70 years ago. But nonetheless, it's a very serious issue, and we need to treat it as such.
Sure.
We're going to wind up putting a water tower eventually there, right?
Yeah, and who's going to pay for that?
Right.
The developer should pay for it.
Okay with the 16 lots?
I'm fine with it.
Yes.
Okay.
So it does require a public hearing, and we can have that on May the 2nd at 6:00 PM. Leave this stuff here.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the proposed land acquisition of the Potts property.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'll try to keep this as short as I can. So we want to talk about the land acquisition of the Potts property that is adjacent to landfill between, the landfill and Route 50. Originally a 68-acre portion of land. And I do believe in their, their first ask, they were going to, one of the options was, is they could keep 14.1 acres. They've actually modified that now to, the proposal is 41.2 acres. No, I'm sorry, I'm wrong. An additional 12.7 acres, which leaves us 41.2 acres at a million dollars. The original asking price was $63,000. It is now $24,271.40, and 84 cents, for a difference of $12,000 per acre.
Mark, what's on that property right now?
It's an agricultural field.
And they're asking how much an acre?
Uh, $24,271.84, which is actually fairly consistent with the last appraisal we had done on that, because of the zoning.
The last appraisal you had, you had all the lots out front along the road, too.
Yes. Yes.
Yeah. So they've cut the best part.
They devalued the back.
Yeah, they devalued the back. And farmland sells anywhere from $5,000 to $10,000 an acre.
This was due to.
Unless it's got irrigation on it, and it might be more.
Well, like I say, this was due to the appraisal, because of the zoning in there. It's industrial.
It's industrial, it's.
It's industrial. It's a mix. It's a mixed bag.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Is it industrial?
It's industrial, commercial, and.
Is zoned industrial?
Yes.
Yeah.
Zoned industrial. The 7-11 went for $300,000. That land, that's three acres, and.
It's on the highway. It's on the highway. We're talking about.
Right, but we're, we're right.
So this is what, is what is behind that, but it is on industrial, commercial, and.
Yeah, it's still very, very.
It's a mixed bag.
It's an ag residential.
And if we don't buy it.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, James. You interrupted me, James. I'm getting a different message. You just said it's ag residential. What is it?
It's a mix of ag, residential, commercial.
Which part are we buying? Ag, residential, or commercial?
What we are buying is the mix of commercial, residential, that is being currently used as ag.
Current, yeah.
So when it gets appraised, you're gonna have it appraised again, correct?
No, this is pretty consistent with the last appraisal that we had, which was only two years ago.
You're not gonna get it appraised again?
I wasn't.
Because they've cut off, they've cut off the best part of it.
Yes, they did.
So why wouldn't we get it reappraised?
Because this is consistent with what the appraisal price was before when they cut the best part off.
And I also think it depends on what you, what you claim is best part, it depends on what it's, what we're trying to use it for.
So the last appraisal we had was with the cutoff, so it was already removed out of the equation, which already had devalued the back portion of the property.
Okay.
That was only two years ago, and that was done by, um, William McCain.
You didn't put that in, uh, it's not in the briefbook, the appraisal?
The old appraisal, yes.
Yeah.
It wa- and that isn't my fault, it was not.
Yeah.
But that is, that is a-
Now, is this just gonna be used to, for dirt?
This is only going to be used for dirt, so the, the solid waste, as it stands right now, is in year five of a five-year permit process for a landfill expansion that goes to the west. It does not go to the east. These things are not interchangeable, you can't just get it and then decide, I want to play this card over here. Doesn't work that way. It is for the Culver property, that is what we have invested in, this is not for this. This is, this is for dirt. One thing I can do out there to make sure that this is never suitable for landfill is dig a hole.
We know that.
Because if, if you dig a hole, the, the amount of money that would cause you to recompact that ground-
Yeah.
-back to a suitable source for landfill use-
I think-
-is astronomical.
I think what I'd like to see before we go, you know, further with this, I would like to see a, a plat that shows what is commercial, what is residential, and what is ag.
Okay, I can do that.
And the other thing, why, why would the 50-foot buffer be on us instead of them? If they're the ones that want it, why shouldn't the buffer be on them?
It's a fairly good question, that I can certainly ask.
Otherwise, we wouldn't have to have a buffer, would we? Are we required by law to have to have a buffer?
With the, with the zoning.
Consistently, the landfill in all of its borrow pit operations has always been consistent with a 50, 50-foot buffer all the way around the ponds. So I mean, that's something that we-
Well, it's not a pile, you're not, you're not doing landfill, you're digging a hole.
I'm digging a hole.
Yeah.
Right, so the ponds all have a 50-foot buffer of trees all the way around them.
Okay.
And that's consistent with what we do.
Yeah.
So, to be quite honest with you, when, when we start to move this thing around and it starts to get moved, I have to cut down some trees, and for that, I'll have to do reforestation work anyway. So in that reforestation work, we would normally plant trees. Any extra trees that we plant in the area are automatically a tree bank for the county, for any future or need that we have for forest restoration work.
Actually, think, being that the property is, they've taken away the best part of the property.
That's what they say.
Okay, wow.
That's not what I say. I say they left-
Best part for what we need.
I say, I say they left me the best part of the property.
Yeah, well, that's fine, I understand what you're saying, but they've taken away the, the building lots along the-
Correct.
Along, you know, that, that would change the appraisal on the rest of the-
Well, like I say, in, two years ago, when we did the appraisal, it was with a cutoff, where the best lots were already cut off.
Okay, so that was for the 40 acres?
Yes, that was for the, well, it was, it was a little bit more than 40 acres, it was, the difference was 12, they kept 12 more acres this time than what they did in that appraisal.
So we're, so you're talking a different appraisal?
Uh, I don't know that it would make-
They kept 12 more acres closer to the highway, right?
Yes.
Okay, so they kept, you know, the-
My purposes, I was never gonna use-
Well, your purposes is-
For my purposes, I was never gonna use the 12 acres anyway. That was for my purpose.
Yeah.
Cuz my, my intention was, so I mean, you know, when we look at an appraisal, you're probably looking at something close to anywhere from $3,000 to $5,000 for an appraisal that we can do. But I can tell you, I don't believe that, that appraisal done two years ago, I don't think the price is going to change that much, is, is it worth it? That would be my question.
I think we need to see the appraisal, the last appraisal.
The last appraisal.
And then see the, um, difference in the commercial, ag, and-
Okay.
Yeah.
I think there was two appraisals last time, was on there, Mark?
No, that was on the original.
Okay.
And then, and hers was actually higher, the one that they had gotten was higher, and that was that tax differential cutoff that they had offered as a tax break, as a donation.
Have you ever done any borings to make sure that the right kind of dirt's there?
Nope, but I know what's there.
Do you know what's down 30-foot?
Mm-hmm.
How?
Well, 38 years tells me what's there, but no.
Westside.
When the Westside Collector Road was cut through that same property, they came across the clay vein that runs right across the center of that property. That clay vein was, had to be bridged over when they built the road, because they couldn't remove it, because it was so much clay there. That clay vein is actually in the beginnings of our borrow pit that we already currently own. So that clay vein runs out across the center of that field, across the, the, the Westside Collector Road, and continues out into the other field. Now, that's where I become a little bit more unsure of where that clay vein stops, but if you were looking to site a brand-new landfill, if you were out looking for someplace to put a landfill, what you would do is soil boards, because there's three things that landfills need. They need clay, they need sand, and they need topsoil, which this property holds all three. Now, as we're moving forward and we're looking at cell construction and some other things, the clay that's there is some of the best clay that we've, we've actually ever come across. This is some nasty sticky stuff, which is excellent for landfill construction. So when we look at cost of building landfill cells moving forward, we have the ability to go on property that we already own, bring out material that cut, that reduces the cost of the actual cell construction as we move forward.
Soil alone is worth more than the whole property and trucking.
You know, I'm not playing the devil's advocate here a little bit, because we just go back-
I knew you'd have questions.
We just go back a few years when, um, the administration was sitting here telling us how badly we had to have the Conley Mill land because we needed the dirt.
Correct.
Okay, so after we got the Conley Mill land, then we're told that it's too expensive to haul dirt over there. Now, I understand it is expensive.
So-
So now we're-
At that point-
Let me finish.
Okay.
So I'm, I'm, you know, I'm being a little, not skeptical, but, you know, I just wanna make sure, are we gonna acquire this property, and we're gonna pay a million dollars plus for it? Because millions are bottom, right?
Right.
Okay. And at some point in time, we don't have the right kind of dirt, or some other reason we can't do it, you know, if we got approval from the, um, MDE to be able to dig the dirt there, we, if we got all the ducks in a row, in other words.
So, at that point, when we talked about the Conley Mill property, okay, and the dirt that was there, if we did the dirt calculations that the landfill would need to process what is left for the landfill and the landfill expansion, that would, that number would be 6,419,625 cubic yards. If we look at the Potts' property, on the two sides, it, it comes out to about four mil- a little over 4 million yards. If we look at Conley Mill, that's two, 2,686,000 cubic yards. If you put, if you put all these things together, all this dirt comes up to 6,171,000 cubic yards. That's actually 3,000 cubic yards short of what we need to process what we have left, the, the entire landfill expansion, you would still need at some point some 300,000 yards of dirt. Now, in that timeframe, we accept cleanfield dirt from contractors who come in, and the reality of that is, is that we would probably accept that much dirt over that timeframe from development or whatever the case may be. We accept dirt all the time, people bring us dirt, so we would probably get that much dirt. So it would prob- it's gonna fare out fairly quick.
Where will the next cell be built?
Cell 7 is on the corner, that front corner.
Okay.
And then I, what my suggestion would be is, you know, when we're looking at the Culver property, we, we've got a couple obstacles, one, we have a road there, we have a, we have a power line there. If, I will be gone, so this will be somebody's problem, not my problem, but if it was my suggestion, probably what I would go be, do before I moved all of that, was go as far over on the Culver property as I could, and I would start landfilling from there and bring it back to the current landfill. You offset the closing of the road, and you offset the moving of the poles. Now, it'll probably cost you more, but at that point in time, but-
They already subdivided off the better portions of the properties?
Well, they, they took the front, the 50 lots.
Didn't subdivide it already?
Uh, no, they haven't done it.
It what?
It's proposed, they, they, they have done it on a plat that, that is shown in that, that agreement that they had sent.
Who's paying for the subdivision?
I believe that that would, don't believe we pay for their subdivision. We pay for the subdivision of that line.
Excuse me?
So, so moving the line back off of Route 50 to our portion, I believe that's on us.
So the whole, and so the whole portion that we would take, we would pay for that subdivision lot?
We would subdivide it, we would pay to subdivide it, that's what you're asking, yes.
Not the other lot, yeah.
Yes, we're paying to subdivide.
Why would we pay to subdivide it? He's the one that wants to take the better pe- better portions of, of the property. Why are we gonna pay to subdivide?
Well, that'd be another question we can ask.
Yeah, he needs to pay for the subdivision. Uh, he's also saying that we're supposed to be responsible 100% of the transfer, transfer and recordation tax, I have no idea why he's saying that. Nobody does that, that's always a split. Sean, they call that a sweetheart deal. So, those are the only two problems I have, we should be paying for the subdivision, the, the recordation, um, should be split.
I have a quick question.
Yes.
You say you're gonna dig a hole, but not the pond, is what you're telling me?
So what we would probably do immediately, if we bought the property, we would already begin to, the, the smaller pieces off to the one side, we would start to permit that as borrow pit right now, and that would allow us to start to swing out.
You know why I'm asking this question?
Yeah.
Someone's gonna be asking me-
Yeah.
-that live over there. I just wanna make sure that, as we discussed before, I like the buffer of trees where people wouldn't see-
Yes. Where's the 50-foot?
They're still gonna do that?
There'll be a 50-foot buffer around the pit anyway.
Okay.
And, uh, one of my biggest concerns in this whole area is, is that we do not own the trees that are between the landfill now and Route 50. We do not own those trees. They can come in there tomorrow and they can timber those trees, and they can open up the whole backside of landfill out to Route 50.
It doesn't really matter, you see the, the giant trash pile just-
It will be a beautiful meadow of green grass blowing in the wind when I'm done with it.
It's a trash pile.
He see, he did.
Oh, sorry, uh, landfill's fancy version.
That is a sanitary landfill, Josh.
Right.
One of the most sophisticated landfill styles that you will come across.
So you, you understand the questions that we have?
Yes.
Try to get that correct.
So we'll look at, we'll look at the, the zoning, to what is zone, commercial, residential, and all the different things. We're gonna look at, we're gonna get you the prior, um-
Appraisal.
Appraisal, and we're going to look at having the Potts do the subdivision.
And a transfer and recordation split.
Is that about a cover?
Yep. Just, I mean, obviously, remember last time we had this happen, the public comes out and is quite upset, uh, how do we, I guess, uh, you say you're digging a hole, and that's the best way to prevent any kind of, uh, future, uh, issues?
Yes.
Planting a buffer, too. I guarantee it's gonna be a hole. Well, I think the last time, too, they thought it was gonna be, um, another cell.